All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Good evening. Today is Thursday, March 24th. It's 6:30 PM. It's the Illinois TCG Local Schools Board of Education regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Dr. Dobrikow?
Present.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as written. So moved. Second please. Discussion on the agenda. So, we have an executive session, kind of right out of the box. It's not the way we like to do it, right? We prefer to do the executive session at the end of the meeting, but that doesn't always work out. So, I want people to think of this as abnormal versus normal, right? Because we'd prefer to do the executive session at the end of the meeting. So, with that, I'll, let's vote on the agenda and then we'll talk about executive session.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrikow?
Yes.
Sorry, Dr. Dobrikow.
No, it's fine.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code 122-22G5 for matters required to be kept confidential by state and federal law in Ohio Revised Code 122.22G1 to consider the employment of a public employee. Do we have a motion, please? Do we get one? A second?
Yep.
All right. Any discussion on the motion to go into executive session? All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Dobrikow?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we will return. We will vote on action items. We will try to be brief.
That was significantly longer than I expected, so for that I apologize.
You need this?
Yes, please. So I guess I'll call the meeting back to order. Can I just call it back to order and we can go? Okay. So next item, the board president's report will, since we took so long in this session, I will make it very brief.
Yeah.
We have some updates from board members, so maybe Lakeisha you want to start?
Yeah, sure. So yesterday I attended two meetings, committee meetings. One was with the Ohio School Boards Association, the diversity committee that I sit on. And so we, during that meeting, they presented information from, I think the program was called RICE, that just kind of works with different school districts or organizations in regards to diversity. There was also shared, there is an upcoming workshop on May 11th from 4:30 to 7:00. It's free and it's for our frontline educators, those who are teachers, administrators, but it is the, trying to think the name of it, was equality versus equity is what that workshop is, but again, it's free and so they are looking for, you know, people to participate in that. That was at 5:00. At 6:00, there was a diversity and equity committee which was held here. Very good committee meeting that Makila ran. Lots of conversation about the goals that they're wanting to achieve and that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Hold on, anything down here?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Two announcements. The school advocacy committee is tasked with educating our community about issues that face our district in regards to state funding systems, and this is just right from the website, to advocate for Olin Tangi students and of course, our taxpayers. We'll be hosting a candidate forum for all general assembly candidates on April 7th at 6:30 PM. The purpose of my announcement, President O'Brien, is just simply to confirm that Mr. Brenner will be there, Ms. Weiger will be there. This is for Senate District 19. Representative Stevens from House District 61. Mrs. Lear will be there, Mrs. Valentine will be there. We have not heard a response from Mr. Jordan or Ms. Henshaw. So that's the advocacy committee's candidate forum. The next announcement is just to give you a little more detail. We are working very hard on a fair school funding summit. It's been kind of whispered and mentioned a couple of times in different reports. The summit will be June 7th at Olin Tangi High School. Over 50 school districts similarly situated to Olin Tangi, meaning they get at or less than a non-public school, I'm sorry, non-private school, they get less than private schools. They, they'll be invited. Save the dates, we'll go out tomorrow. So the invites will go to the board president of the district, the associated state rep, the associated state senator, their superintendent and their treasurer. The event that day will, in the morning, educate folks on where we're at with fair school funding and kind of celebrate, we did, we're on the right track. Specific names we're holding off on, but these are folks that people hear about all the time on the news statewide, folks from the executive and the legislative branches of our government, state government. This event will really allow Olin Tangi to lead the effort to secure fair school funding. There's a lot at stake for our taxpayers in our district and no district has more on the line than Olin Tangi. And I do want to recognize the efforts of the Olin Tangi team, the superintendent, the treasurer, Ms. Davis, Mr. Meyer and lots of others have been working at nights so that I could attend the meeting, so thank you. In future announcements, we'll be able to identify the speaking, the speakers that'll be there, so thank you.
All right, great work. I guess for the board members, out on the, the board sharepoint are tonight's slides, so you can pull them up on the screen so you don't have to keep turning around to the monitors, so you can put them up right in front of you. That's something I asked Ms. Davis and Mr. Rafe to do so that we weren't flipping around all the time, so. With that, I'll end the board president's report and we'll move to our first presentation. It's the energy initiative update. Mr. Gordon, our director of business management and facilities.
Good evening. I apologize in advance, I have a little bit of a cold, so I brought my tissues up with me, so. So I apologize, I will go quickly through this. It is a lot of slides on here, but with new board members and not having the opportunity to really share a lot up to this point about the energy initiative and then our House Bill 264 program, I wanted to make sure I tried to cover everything, but I will try to move quickly through these. So back in 2013, we started an energy initiative. There's two parts to the program. The first part was just really getting our arms around when we operated the HVAC mechanical, the electrical, lights and all of the other things for the, for the district. We put meters in to be able to monitor and tell what was, what was being used, when it was being used, look for spikes where it might have high demand or where our controls may have been malfunctioning and causing, for example, we had a chiller that was kicking on in the middle of the night. So we were able to find that by putting those meters in, track that, shut that down. And the two advantages to that was we not only saved energy, but we short, or we extended the life of the equipment because now we weren't letting it cycle when it shouldn't be and kick on and off. And we've had several pieces of equipment where we've been able to do that. So the total cost avoidance, and we say cost avoidance because we're avoiding the cost by if we had continued to operate from 2013 going forward as we had previously, these are costs that we've avoided by not running that way and clamping down. We still, we have savings, our costs go up every year, the cost of the utility units go up, the MCFs, the CCFs, we can't, we can't do anything about that in most cases, but we can do something about how much energy we're using. So since the inception of the program, we've actually have saved, since 2013, $6.8 million different than if we had continued to operate in the way that we had been operating previously as we grew and buildings were coming on. So once we got our hands around it, we were really able to focus and get a lot more information on that. As you can see here on the, on the screen, we, 2013, then we had a little bit of a jump in 14 and really started clamping down going forward. And one thing of note on this slide, and we'll talk a little more about when the second part of the energy project kicked in, which is on the slide, but in 2020, you see a big dip there. That had to do with the COVID and everybody going home. So when we shut the chiller down, didn't run it, why people weren't here, then that was a big energy savings when the, the weather in March, April, May, June really was kicking up and we would have been running the chillers much more often. So that's, you'll see a big savings there. We didn't have as much of a savings with gas because we were right at the end of the heating season through the 2020 winter, so. This here is natural gas savings. Again, you see here, we had a, we did have a little bit of a dip in 2020. You see 2021 really went up and 2021 went up here as well, much higher than 2020, but still not back to 2019. One of the reasons for that, that'll become important later as well, we'll talk about it again, is when we came back after COVID, one of the things we said we would do and needed to do was continue to rotate fresh air throughout our buildings. And so that meant running the air conditioning longer hours while people were in the buildings. We'd run it up to nine o'clock at night or later and cycling air more often. So we had, part of our energy program was to bring air in as it was needed. So we would monitor a lot of different things like temperature, humidity, CO2, and then react to that by bringing, bringing fresh air in. So we were bringing the fresh air in more often in 2021, which caused us to have to reheat the air, the cold air more often and cool the hot air more often, which drove up our energy cost. And our energy star scores you see here, we drove up in 2017, we were 97.2. We dropped, dropped down to 92.5. You see the two years in between with the COVID, the, we had a little bit of a jump, better scores in 2020 and then dropped down again in 2021. So we'll continue to work on that. We're very proud of our energy star scores and we'll continue to get those back up where they need to be. And then this is always a nice slide, and these are the energy units that we've saved by having this program. So when you look at the different components on here, and I won't go over all of them, but it really shows how we've been, been helpful to the environment by saving, saving a lot of this, the energy through our program. Then the, and I'll slow down a little bit as we get to this part because this is the important part. In 2016, the board approved a house bill project that was a low interest loan to borrow money to make some energy upgrades, to be able to save money and let it pay for itself through the energy savings. And what that included was to, we had to run it through the house school facilities committee, which was then the part of the OFCC. It had to pay for itself out of the energy savings in 15 years or less. And then we had to choose an energy services company through doing an RFQ and a process that we involved facilities committee in and then presented the selected company to the board. And then there was a three-year guarantee on that. So for the first three years, once it was installed with the program, they had to guarantee the savings with that. Now, there's a lot of caveats to that savings. The biggest one is there were some specific parameters. For example, we, we set when we ran our, our building. So if we shut air off at high schools at three o'clock unless we had an event, those were the parameters that our, our energy services company took. So once we entered this program and started the guarantee period, anytime we operated outside of that, they would take that back off of our energy usage. So that was all part of balancing out the like-for-like, apples-to-apples comparisons that we would, that we would do with that, the program, once we were in it, so that they had a fair shape to make sure that they can meet the guarantee and, and then we could also monitor that and make sure we were getting what we were, what we were promised. So the project included changing all of our exterior, exterior parking lot lights and building lights, retrofitting all of our interior lighting to LED. We replaced two chillers, two boilers, two air handling units and replacement of all the district controls. And the benefit of that was we were able to buy this equipment out of our house bill project and our low interest loan and it's less equipment that we had to go back and purchase out of PI or go out for bond money to purchase to keep up with our, our mechanical replacement. Yes, sir?
Did we ever make any claims against the guarantee?
That slide is, great question. That slide's coming up. I can get through a couple more that will kind of explain that, so we get to the third slide, then that'll, that'll...
I guess maybe a little for Emily. I think it's important to note that the borrowing did not go against the taxpayer because your future savings in essence pays back the debt, right?
Correct. Correct. And so, and I did these as a summary of both gas and electric. And I did these in dollars, the earlier slides, a lot of those were units when I did the graphs because showing that we're driving down our usage, as I mentioned, that's the part we can control is how many kilowatt hours we use or how many, how many MCFs that we use on the gas side. Here with the dollars and the guarantee is, is based on the dollars. So our energy services company, they take today's usage back to 2013 dollars for comparison sake. We take today's usage, or their usage from, I'm sorry, not 2013, their base year was, was 2015 and it took us two years to install, so we were comparing back to 2015. We bring those dollars up to today's dollars because we want to compare it to today's. We don't want to underestimate what we're really doing with the cost of our utilities. So our...
And I guess these would exclude any new buildings?
These exclude any new buildings. So these are all the buildings pre-Berlin.
Same store kind of usage?
Yes, yeah, same, same buildings, pre-Berlin, so Berlin on, Berlin, Shell Meadows are not included in there and the academy and the board office is not, but the bus, bus garages are included in there because those were here in buildings that were, that were part of that, our energy usage at that time.
Because if you go to the budget and you look at the budget, the utilities costs may have gone up, it's because we added new facilities, we realized savings in existing facilities and I don't want people to think that we're not being accurate.
Yes. You are correct, the comparisons are like buildings. I do want to clarify as well that we still put the same measures in at Berlin and Shell Meadows and, and the other buildings as well.
Just outside the company.
It's just outside of the, the guarantee that, that we're talking about here. Good questions. So here on this slide is, is the total gas electric usage for fiscal year '21. So as you can see, our actual usage is on the left, the cost, and then our target where our guarantee is at is on the yellow, so that's what we needed to meet. Then on the, on the right, the blue slide is once you take those things out, so the extra runtimes we had in 2021 where we ran up to nine o'clock instead of shutting off at four o'clock, where we may have had extra lighting. I shared this example before, Liberty High School was a parking lot that was really dark. We had a lot of complaints about, so we did this project. We actually increased the lighting output at those, so that's part of what they calculate. They take the difference between what was there and what we put in to calculate to make sure that they get their guarantee as well. And it'd be, it's important to note, we don't leave those guarantee calculations to our energy services company. We, we monitor those, we review the reports and the, the calculations that they're basing that on, the cost of units and what those units are and, and how many units you'd use in an hour. We had an independent company, Heapy, our mechanical engineer that does the workforce on our new buildings, they did an independent report before. Once we selected the company and they gave us what they thought they could save us, we then went to Heapy, had them evaluate that and say, this is right, that's right, you need to tweak this, these are the costs, so when they do their calculations, we would know. So when they come back and we, we go from our target number down to our adjusted number, that's based on independent calculations by Heapy that said, these are the unit costs you should use for the extra hours. The extra hour will cost you this much, or this much usage, then you apply that to your cost per unit. So I just, it's important to note that we aren't just relying on ES, the energy conservation company to, to calculate that for us. And then this is the, so we're on, we're currently in year three of the target. This is the two years combined, so two years that we've now, now concluded on the guarantee period. And so you can see again, on the left is the, the total usage, on the right is what the target and then on the, or I'm sorry, the center of the yellow is the target and the far right is our adjusted. And you can see, 2021, the far left, the gray was higher, but when you factor 2020 in there, that brought that down. So we actually were below the guarantee before we even, we even got to that point, but we still... but we still calculated our adjusted. And this, Mr. O'Brien is the, this slide we're talking about. So our, our total project cost for the new board members was 7.2 million. We did get energy rebates of $957,000 back that we applied and 600,000 or so that was applied to avoid not having to get as high of a loan for the project. So we spent the majority of the rebate money back on that. And then the, so the project loan amount was 6.6 million with the cost avoided since we started the program. So this isn't since we started guarantee period, this is since we started changing light bulbs. Our biggest and quickest gain was when we went to LED lights, which we were able to complete in about a year and a half. So we started seeing some savings right away. So that's why that was the board approved, I believe it was June of 2016. We started light bulbs and after we got through all of the approvals and ordered the bulbs, we started changing those out in December of 2016. So we got immediate savings with that and made that our priority to get those in first. So in that time, we've saved 3.2 million. Our total interest and principal paid to date has been 2.8 and we're five years in on the 10-year loan period. And our balance after the cost avoided, which we'd like to see that number grow, was 370,000. So that's cost avoided that we would have paid otherwise. And, and again, I want to just go back and mention the mechanical equipment. So why this is only 370,000, which is, is great savings and then with the total since 2013 is 6 million, but with that 370, we also, again, didn't have to replace two chillers through other monies or the other equipment. So that was the added bonus to the 370,000 we've been able to save over the guarantee period. So. And this is just some parts of the guarantee, if you have any questions on that. And I've, I've covered most of it. If they, if they had not reached the guarantee, we could carry it over to the second year and calculate. So if one year was a negative, they didn't reach it, the second year was a positive, we could balance those two out and then carry that forward to the third year and then assess whether they owed us money or we had, had indeed saved money. And at this point, after two years, we've obviously saved quite a bit of money and, and they've reached the guarantee. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
What was the name of our energy company that helps with this?
It is HEAT.
One, sorry, one quick question. The increased air rotation that we're doing as a result of COVID, is that planned to be permanent or at some point is that getting phased out? What's the intention there?
For the foreseeable future, we plan to continue that until we let this take its course. As you can see, we, we are still saving energy with doing that. And I, I want to share, we're, we're not driving everything down. At three o'clock was not a hard stop. If we had a very humid day in August or some of the others, or in summer when our custodians are working and trying to get wax and they would say, hey, we need some extra time with the air on. Because generally we'll shut it off, we work the 410s, we'll shut it off ahead of time because most buildings will hold the temp for a while. But if it was really humid days, we might turn it on and run extra time with those. So same thing during COVID, we would keep it. If anybody was in the building, any groups were in the building, we would run it till eight or nine. We'll continue doing that and we'll continue to take guidance. All of the schools, all of the facilities, whether it's hotels or any of those, are all in the same boat and we'll continue to adjust as the other like facility management does and as we get advice from those who know much more than we do about what's going on in the world.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? Great story.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, we now have the superintendent's report, Mr. Rafe.
He's walking out, I mean. He's leaving, sanitizing his clicker. Mr. Gordon just, you know, it says he's out of cold. Getting ready to go away for spring break, so. What would you, Dustin? Are you shut it off? You crashed?
Is this the first time at the podium?
Mine, yeah, yeah. I'm new in town. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Dustin. As always, I've got a lot of great things to share. We did our Equity and Inclusion Team sponsored the One Olentangie Service Plunge on last Saturday. We had 188 individual students and staff come in and volunteer with 11 different service organizations. So a great, a great job again by the Equity and Inclusion Team for that service plunge. This is now, I think, the, the second time we've done that. So congratulations to them. My phone and email were blowing up last week. We had a Berkshire Middle School seventh grader, Emerson M., she spoke at the Buckeye Association of School Administrators Conference last week, Women in Leadership Conference. And it was attended by 440 superintendents, teachers, other educators and business leaders about her successful cookie business. And it was just, it was so great to get text after text or email after email about, this is one of your kids, this is one of your students, this kid is amazing. So congratulations to Emerson and her family on a, a job well done. I gotta hit her, hit her up for some cookies. Mr. Winter's third grade class, again, this is just stuff that happens all throughout the district, but highlighting Mr. Winter and his third grade, grade class that started collecting donations for family and friends of a classmate who has just recently come here from the Ukraine. So it's just another great job of, of community outreach. Our, our, just never, I never stopped being amazed by what our, our kids and our staff do to rally the, rally the troops when, when someone's in need. I had mentioned the Olentangie High School show choir events coming up or that participated, but they went to the Marysville Showcase and the juniors, Tatum M. and Rory V. are in first and second place in their solo competition. The keynote, the she-nots were overall third and the keynotes earned best band, best choreography, best vocals and overall grand champion. So congratulations to all of them. Just, it's just amazing. If you ever have a chance to see them in action, I highly, highly recommend it. We've got a great program going on with our Teacher Academy. There's a, a, there's a group called Educators Rising. It's a state organization and they had a state conference. And we had 23 Olentangie students compete and 18 qualified for nationals, six scoring in the top five earning a gold rating. So they're going to come here and give a, a quick presentation at our April 4th, 14th board meeting. So, so again, this is an opportunity for us to grow our own. And Mr. Spinner talked about Berlin High School again, pay attention back there. The Berlin Decca students partnered with Ronald McDonald House for their Million Reasons Why marketing campaign, and they did such a great job in their fundraising efforts that they got invited to the groundbreaking ceremony. So congratulations to Berlin Decca. And I had the pleasure, the honor to attend the Ohio Capitol Conference meeting last Monday night to present our Olentangie High School Athletic Director Jay Wolf for induction into the Ohio Capitol Conference Hall of Fame. Jay has been an OCC AD for 20 years at Olentangie and now, or 23 years at Olentangie and three years at Watkins Memorial previously when they were in the conference. And he's certainly seen a lot of change. And as I mentioned numerous times in my induction speech, he is certainly Hall of Fame worthy. So congratulations to Jay. And as I mentioned before about growing our own, geez, look, Mr. Smith, you're already getting front billing and a picture and a slide here. Our human resources team had our, our certified interview day, what we typically do the last Thursday before spring break over at Liberty High School. We had 170 applicants in already. We've already been conducting building interviews and, and, and as we, as I mentioned before, interviewed the many intervention specialists already. So hiring season comes, comes fast and furious here and, and I really have always been very impressed. I've worked in other districts and we didn't even start thinking about the hiring process till June. And by, we want to have everybody hired, more or less everybody hired before we leave for the school year. So congrats to Mr. Meyer, Mrs. Freeze and Mrs. Iceman and the entire HR team for organizing and putting on a great certified interview day. Some action items of note, we have three administrative positions here and all three of these administrators are here in attendance. Mrs. Nancy Freeze is going to be, is getting promoted from her role as Assistant Human Resources Director to the Director of Human Resources. As I have mentioned to you previously, we're pulling off some of Mr. Meyer's responsibilities as Director of HR and strengthening our HR team again as we continue to grow there. And I'm gonna skip over Mr. Davis for a second. Mr. Tron Smith is going to be moving from his principalship at Orange High School to work with Mr. Wright, our Chief of Administrative Services and serve as the Director of Administrative Services. Again, as we continue to grow and deal with a multitude of issues at our building, their primary, primary role is supporting all of the building administrators, building operations and, and you know, what happens with our kids. The, I, I call it administrative services because they are the administrators who serve our kids in the buildings and that's who they work with directly. And then the last administrator, not to give him any, any additional fanfare, but he did drag his family to a board meeting, which I remember doing, is to introduce, introduce, Nathan Davis as the Principal of Berlin Middle School. So Mr. Davis is here with his wife, Jamie, and his two sons. Oh dang it, Nate, I texted you and I left my phone. Sam and Drew. Dang it. Got to be honest. I had Sam, I didn't want to forget Drew, but, and Sam and Drew. So welcome, Davises. Happy to, congratulations to Nancy and Tron. I've got a couple resignations I want to highlight. Debbie Miller and Lucy Mosley have been at Liberty Tree Elementary School in the front office for, Debbie Miller's been there since the building opened, Lucy Mosley over 10 years or so. They are retiring, so they, they will be sorely missed. Ron Moore is a evening custodian at Liberty who's been here forever, worked, worked there when I was there and does, just does a great job. And Rona Walker is our food service manager. So got some, some retirements and some really great people there. And then for action items, you are approving or requesting the approval of our student fee schedule, which Mr. Dr. Fetti will talk about and the Student Athletic Handbook's here in his presentation. And then we have approved the cost for CT Consultants. CT is our Civil Engineer of Record and they are looking at some redesign of the traffic patterns at Berkshire Middle School. And anybody who's ever dropped a kid off at Berkshire Middle School will applaud those efforts. Mr. Bryant, because both of us have done that. And then we have right-of-way easement for AEP with, to do some, to get the main power source to Berlin Middle School. So that is a, a big mile marker. And then there's our next round of important dates. We have made it to spring break, so I hope everybody has a good, restful break, enjoy some time with family and friends. And then we are doing something here coming up April 4th. On the return from spring break, we're going to hold a board work session. Tell, for the public, that is an opportunity for the board to interact, have dialogue in, in open session, but they are not having any action items or agenda items and there is no public participation. It's just the board working on some strategic planning for the future. And then our next regular board meeting will be April 14th.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Rafe? Actually have a comment. Something I meant to mention in the president's report. So earlier this week, we had two maintenance staff injured in an accident that resulted in a fire at Olentangie High School. I want to wish them well and a speedy recovery and hopefully things go well for them.
Thank you very much. That is very kind.
All right. Treasures Report. It's half deal, we're not going to make you stand if you want to do it for your seat. That's perfectly fine.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't think anybody wants to take the time to watch me hobble up to the podium anyway. So a couple of updates that we wanted to present this evening. The first being the school finance payment reports from the Ohio Department of Education. You can see the web link there on the materials. But what we can tell the community for Fair School Funding Plan and how that's being implemented to date is that there are still component parts of the Fair School Funding Plan that is in law that are not fully funded. And there are some language pieces in the law that are not operating as intended. So the Ohio Department of Education is working on getting those solutions in place and clarifying any last pieces of the funding report. But what we will see in the May forecast is we intend to balance the state funding to the current funding reports available and move forward from that point. So we will discuss through the May forecast presentation the specifics of what that impact looks like, but just know that it could cause some variances that were not anticipated as those items get clarified. The other thing we wanted to give an update on is from our Finance and Audit Committee. We had a committee meeting in February where we reviewed our October financial packet. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at a packet where the information had already been board approved, public information, but really just looking at the layout and the information within it and how that is meaningful to the community and to other financial professionals outside of the school world. So we have some revisions. They, the packet has been re-presented to the committee. We are asking for revisions as of tomorrow and then we will be able to put together a full presentation to the board to get your feedback and understanding of what might be included or changed about the financial packet to enhance it. So just wanted to let you know that that is coming in the next weeks or so. We have a few action items. Our financials for February are on the agenda for approval. Our final real estate collections are anticipated in March. We actually received notification from Mrs. Lewis with the County Auditor's Office that it should be here next week. So we will have the final results of collections for real estate and include that in the forecast update. In terms of expenditures, we are on target for what we anticipated we would be month to date. Current month expenditures are approximately 8% or just over. So we're still trending on point for fiscal year expenditures. So that's good to know to date. Any adjustments or updates again will be included. You'll see that in actuals as we go forward and included in the forecast. We also have amended appropriations for this evening and board meeting minutes as a part of ORC compliance. And then we have the, the donations that you see on, sorry Dustin, I'm getting a little ahead of you. If we could go to donations, thank you. I'm forgetting I'm not controlling it from my computer. Sorry, they took the clicky and I'm a lot of sorts. However, donations, we wanted to make sure that we said thank you in recognizing these donations. We have a lot of community members that support programs that are not a part of general fund budgets. Specifically, the Olentangie Special Olympics Program had two significant donations that we are grateful for. Anonymous donors that put together a donation in honor of Denise Gatz and Buffalo Wild Wings Foundation. And then of course, we have some supplemental coaching support coming in from our athletic boosters at Olentangie Liberty and Olentangie High School. So we're grateful for our athletic, athletic boosters and what they do for our students. We also want to make sure that we say thank you for in-kind donations and volunteer time, especially as we are able to start opening up our buildings again to parents and volunteers. We know that there will be even more advocacy work for, with our students. So we appreciate all of those donations as well. Are there any questions I can answer for you about the financials or anything?
No. Nope. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to public participation session.
Yes, we have one submission for this evening.
Yeah, I know. I scribbled it. I'm sorry. I got here like right, as soon as I could leave work. Richard Carrico, 7112 Lewis Center Road, Galena.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, the reason I wanted to address you all tonight, this is actually Women's History Month and I noticed, you know, of course, the first black female SCOTUS might be in front of us right now. Except the thing that bothered me a little bit about that was the premise around it. It wasn't that just, we're, I'm going to recommend it.
It wasn't that just, we're, I'm going to recommend a new SCOTUS for the Supreme Court, was our president decided it's going to be a black female. If he would have, what if he would have said, I want a white male, or he wanted something else, wanted a specific thing? I don't think it's fair to point that out.
Do you have something relative to-
I do, I do. I'm, I'm going somewhere with this. I promise you, and it's, and it isn't, I'm some kind of a racist standing up here, promise you that. Where race is concerned, I learned this from my son. He has autism. He doesn't even get racism. He doesn't even know. If you don't want, if you don't want, if you don't want people being racist, don't use race. Okay? How many women, women in general, are judges? Okay? The thing is, right now in this country, we've had an uptick in teen suicide from girls in, in the past few years, a lot, 50% at least. And I just lost my daughter. She died in college in November. I know what it feels like to lose a daughter. You know, right now, too, that our, our same president nixed a Supreme Court Justice, she was black, and he told, he told him, you put her up there, I will, I will filibuster her. So, it doesn't have anything to do with that. Okay, but there's a lot of people that get, they work and they work and they work for something, and what happens? You look, too, you got Leah Thomas, just, just won a national swimming title, divisional national swimming title, women's national swimming title.
30 seconds, please.
Except she was a guy. The same, the, the woman of the year that Joe Biden just, just put up there, Rachel Levine, was a guy for 54 years. This demoralizes women, and I don't think it's right. People, they work so hard to do what they come to do, and what happens? They get it snagged right out from underneath them. What happens to women's athletics because of this? Unfortunately, um, the-
That's your three minutes, please?
Ma'am?
That was your three minutes, please?
Just if you could just bring it to conclusion.
Sorry?
If you, if you wanna just bring it to conclusion, finish.
I, thank you. And the, you know, the, um, I, I would really like to see, I would really like to see people that, that work very hard, and you, you board members, you promote this, I know you do. My daughter loved this school. You prepared her very well for college, I gotta give you that. She did well, she loved this school. You know, imagine any of your kids being prepared for something, and all of a sudden, just because they're not the right brand, sorry, that's what this is all about. That's CRT, too. You can't do this, you need, you need the government's help. I implore you to rethink this. Think about what it does to the kids. They look, they don't look at it like with all the politics that y'all see. What they look at is, I'm not good enough. That's what they see, and it's not right. When you gotta have help, if they can't do it themsel-, they can do it themselves. They need to be told that and reinforced that all the time, that they, they're loved, every single kid. And that's what has to happen here. Thank you very much.
Sorry for the loss of your daughter. All right, we're now gonna move to the, the discussion items, we're in trouble with that. The Fetti trifecta, we've got board policies, student fees, and the student and athletic handbooks.
Absolutely. Good evening. I will start with second reading of board policies. At the last meeting, we covered our first reading, the committee has met to review all the policies. Were there any final questions or discussion that I can be of service on? All right. Next, our student fees, we're asking you to approve next year's student fees with no changes from this year's schedule, so there's no fee increases or reductions.
It's good news.
Good news. And then lastly, we have all of the student handbooks and athletic handbook for next year up for approval. Each year, we form committees to review the handbooks at each level, and you have all been provided with strike-through, redlined copies of each draft. Did you have any questions on any of the handbooks that I could answer before you vote?
I have one quick question and one comment. Related to the, the changes that were made to the cyberbullying section.
Yeah.
I noticed in the last sentence that was added is, communication on the network that threatens, harasses, or bullies others should be reported to the building administrator or another trusted adult. Is the intention that that's another trusted adult within the school district? And if it's, if it's someone outside, which certainly kids should be reporting to a trusted adult. But if it's issues within the network, how are we finding out so that we can appropriately address it?
Yeah, so when it's within the network, we have software that's monitoring certain keywords and activities and all that, but any trusted adult, any employee of the district within the district is trained on reporting bullying and harassment and would be able to direct that to the right person where we could investigate it. There is also, obviously, student behavior outside of school that may or may not find its way into school, and the handbook tries to explain, there was a, kind of a change at the federal level this summer with a Supreme Court case, so we made some modifications to try and reflect the changes that that court case brought about. But to answer your question directly, trusted adult, the intent is within the school, but the implication is wherever you're at, if you need a trusted adult, you should, or if you're being bullied, you should find a trusted adult.
I would just certainly reinforce to kids that, you know, so that we can do something about it if we-
Absolutely, yeah. And we have the Stay Safe Speak Up Helpline that's available to every student through the MyOSD portal, that anytime they open a device to do anything for a class, it's a, it's a tile that they'll see. In addition, it's linked on our school website, there's a phone number, and we are, it continues to grow in use. We've been very intentional with promoting it to make sure the kids know it's out there for the last couple of years, and we've seen quite an increase.
Okay. The one comment is something that was not edited in this, but I would just sort of encourage for future revisions. As I was reading the suicide prevention section of this, it, it strikes me that we can say more and be a bit more explicit about the resources that were available. It's, it's a little thin of a section in the handbook, and I know we have a lot of great resources within the district.
Sure.
And options that are available. I would just encourage to, to look at that and flesh it out more, so that, I, I realize that everybody's not gonna have the student handbook up at all times.
Absolutely, yeah, but-
But, but whatever we can do to promote that, if someone is in need and does have it available, I think we should be as clear as we can.
I, I agree, thank you. That was not something that the committee considered, so we will definitely appreciate that. It is, as you said, a little thin. I will point out, since we're discussing it, in case anyone wants to know, on the student well-being website, on our webpage on our website, there are extensive resources, local and national, that any family could utilize. Any other questions on the handbooks?
Anything else?
Is the athletic, what is that, the acknowledgement of that? I saw that one as a strike-through. Is that gonna be acknowledged, like via Power School final forms or the parental acknowledgement?
Mr. Wright can answer that.
Can you be more specific at the, you talk about the forms themselves?
I just saw it in the handbook, that it was strike-through.
It's, it's part of a section at the end that the only item that will be kept in a physical copy will be the physical. Everything else will be recorded, because it used to say there'd be physical copies of all those documents. So, it was just tried to be cleaned up, that the acknowledgement form and all of the forms that are electronic will be done just in final forms, not also include physical copies to be kept in, in the department.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
You guys, tell Mr. Smith if you're taking notes on this?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith will be running the handbooks and fees. So, he's getting a little bit of other stuff.
Good question.
Just, just a quick comment. I appreciate with the athletic handbook, the continued reinforcement of sportsmanship for spectators. I've gone to a lot of events i- in the last few months, and I'm always proud of our, our Olentangy community, and I think they set a good model for other places that they go. And I'll just leave it at that. You reinforced throughout, you made a, a change where you added, it, it was present before, but you also said it again under spectators before, during, and after the event, and the events about the kids. And I don't remember any game I won and lost 40 years ago, but I do remember how people acted in the games. So, thank you for your hard work on that.
The athletic handbook is done by Mr. Wright, so we will thank him on his hard work on that one. But the point is duly noted, yes. Our children are always watching us. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. All right, thank you, Mr. Fetti, Dr. Fetti, sorry. All right, we'll now start the voting. I'll introduce Board Action Item A, to approve the board policy updates that we just had the second reading on, so it could have a motion for approval. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lester, in a second. Any discussion on the board policy updates? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Hatfield, would you please introduce the treasurer action items?
Yes, please, I would like to introduce treasurer action items A through D for approval, please.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the treasurer action items? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rafe, would you please move forward your action items, present your action items?
Yes, sir, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through H for approval.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the superintendent action items?
Just to say, looking forward to seeing what all of the, the new additions, or I guess promotions, can do. We really appreciate your effort.
That's okay, Clay. You're fine.
Mr. Smith, man. You know, Mr. O'Brien, you do have a senior, an extra year at Orange, you, you know, you could just, you can do the pregnant, the pause.
Not for two years.
Yeah, you got two more years left.
I'll have a senior in two years.
Oh, that's right, oh, yeah, you're right.
And a junior.
Mess with the seniors.
She's got seniors, yeah.
Mess with Mr. Smith, like every time you approve something.
All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico, forgive me. Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second, please, second. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabrico?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we are adjourned. And we have a word-